Welcome to the September 19th regular meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Councilmember Bill Shacklet has our prayer and our pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to introduce a couple of friends, not only friends of mine for a long time, but friends of our community. They've both meant such, done such special things for our community and improve the quality of life of our community in so many ways. And they're going to talk a little bit about an event of our community that's been happening for eight years. And I'd like to introduce Judge Don Ash and Gloria Bonner, if you'll come to the podium. They're going to tell you just a little bit about this event that's happening this Saturday on our square and what it benefits. And then the honoree, Gloria Bonner, is going to do our opening prayers. So, Judge Ash?
I'm honored to be here. I've had the pleasure of knowing y'all for a number of years. I know most of your spouses, and you're like me, you all married above your head. I'm married above mine. And when Rita told me she couldn't be here tonight and asked me if I would step in for her, I told her I'd do that, especially when my friend Gloria was here.
Thank you.
The great thing about Murfreesboro and looking at y'all, each one of you have touched our community in a different way, just not as city officials, but in your involvement. I think of Bill's involvement with the Optimist League, and I could go around and name everything that y'all have been involved in. But that's what makes Murfreesboro great. This Power of Pink thing started with a bunch of ladies having a luncheon probably about 10 or 15 years ago. And then from now, from that, it's expanded into now they have a brunch. Gloria's been to all these things, but they have a brunch, a tennis tournament, a golf tournament, and then tomorrow night, or Saturday night's the big event. It is a wine around the square. The main event, they have a VIP party at Puckett's Grocery. That starts from five to seven. There's tickets available for that. That's a fantastic event. And then they have the event itself, which is from six until nine. If you drive around our square tonight, they've got the pink lights up so you can see what's going to happen there. And then they have the late night party on the alley on Main, which is from nine until midnight. Late night, a late party is one that I will not be attending, so I should go home for that. The proceeds from Wine Around the Square benefit the St. Thomas Rutherford Foundation, Power of Pink. As I said, this started years ago. Rita went over to Franklin, they had a wine around the square at Franklin, not for the Power of Pink, and she came and talked to her friends. And now there's literally hundreds of men and women that support this. Over the 12 years that's been going on, they've raised $1.275 million for uninsured... Yeah, that's great, ma'am. For underinsured and uninsured friends and neighbors who need mammograms and other type of exams. It's across our entire county. The honoree this year is a spectacular young lady, my friend Gloria Bonner. She went to Murfreesboro City Schools, which shows she had a great education. She went to Rutherford County Schools, she went to MTSU, which means she got even a better education. She went to Tennessee State, did great there. She retired from MTSU 2017 as assistant to the president in the office of the University of Community Relations and a member of the president's cabinet. When I say about Gloria, she's fought breast cancer twice. I thought about, you hear breast cancer survivor, she is not a survivor, she is a warrior. And what she does is, she has gone, and the Bible tells us that when you face difficult times, you're supposed to go comfort others. And that's exactly what she's done. She's been a voice and a friend to women and families who have suffered through this. And I cannot imagine a better honoree. So, we're honored that we're going to get to honor her tomorrow night. She's been fantastic, so I'll turn it over to my friend.
Thank you so much. Thank you to our mayor, our city manager, and the members of the council. You know, a great community, a sign of a great community is its great leadership. And I greatly appreciate all of the leadership that you provide for us, and particularly am grateful for this opportunity to stand before you. One of my Rotarian friends said to me one day at Rotary, says Gloria, you're just glowing. And I said to him, Brian, that's because I've had radiation today. So, thank you for the opportunity to offer prayer on behalf of breast cancer awareness. May we pray. Father, we thank you for your presence in the life of this community and the lives of all cancer patients, cancer survivors, and families impacted by this diagnosis. Empower us with hope for each day as we continue to overcome this disease. Surround us with your loving care, access to quality health care, quality health care providers, and faith to endure the journey. Grant us complete healing and help us to look to you for strength and peace of mind. In the mighty name of Jesus, amen.
Amen.
My pledge, ladies and gentlemen, is that I am the United States of America and in the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Bonner, thank you so much. All right, I want to start out, I'm going to move the agenda a little bit. We're going to start, we have a Stars Award that we want to present, and then we have a proclamation that we want to give. So, we'll start with our Stars Award.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. As you know, the Star Service Excellence Program recognizes outstanding employees who embody the city's standards for service excellence. Tonight, we name Parks and Recreation employee Mike Philpod as the latest Stars Award recipient. Nominated by Nate Williams, Director of Parks and Recreation, he had the following to say. On the morning of August 5th, 2019, while participating in a pickleball program at McFadden Community Center, a patron began to have a cardiac emergency. Recognizing the seriousness of the emergency, Mike immediately grabbed the AED and went to aid the patron after ensuring that EMS had been summoned. Mike applied the AED pads and administered a shock and also performed CPR with the help of others until EMS arrived to take the patron to the hospital. Due to Mike's decisive actions, the patron has made a full recovery, and we look forward to seeing him back on the pickleball court very soon. Mike truly does exemplify the city's core service values, going above and beyond his normal duties in providing outstanding customer service. Congratulations, Mike, for being named the most recent Stars Award recipient for your service.
I called Mike the next day after that happened, and Mike's as humble as a person that you'll meet. And I called him and said, hey, man, I just want to tell you how grateful we are for what you did and how you represent the city of Murfreesboro. And the first thing Mike said was, no, I didn't do anything, it was the whole team. He went through all the people that helped, the EMS people that helped, and just said I did what I was trained to do. So, Mike, we appreciate you, we appreciate what you do for the city, and especially for the family that you saved their loved ones. So, thank you very much.
I have a proclamation I want to give tonight. Ms. Crockett had asked, sent me an email a couple of weeks ago, reminding of accomplishment here in the city of Murfreesboro. And as soon as she sent me the email, I'm like, yeah, we're in on that, we'll absolutely take care of this. So, I want to ask John Verge if he'll come up. John. I'm going to read something for you. So, I've known John going all the way back to when we had Rotary Club, at the Boys and Girls Club for many years. So, I want to read something. I think John epitomizes the city of Murfreesboro. John is a lifelong resident of Rutherford County, graduating from Riverdale High School. And for over three decades, John has volunteered his time at the Salvation Army and the Boys and Girls Club, where he gives of his time in service and also acts as a sports announcer. And where his service to our city and the people in it shows his love for Murfreesboro and its citizens. And throughout the years, John has proven to be a loyal friend, a humble servant, a loyal citizen, and a prayer warrior. He is a shining light in our community. Now therefore, I Shane McFarland, Mayor of the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim September 19th, 2019, as a day to honor John Verge, and urge all citizens to join us in honoring this remarkably benevolent man who has provided contributions to so many who have needed him so much. And on top of that, John, this is also a special day because we only give this certain thing to people who we say are family. You know, you don't give the key to your house to anyone that you don't want to come and represent or be at your house. So, it's my honor tonight to not only give you a proclamation, but we want to give you the key to the city.
We need to adjourn the meeting now. It can't get much better than that. So, we're downhill from there. All right, you've got 21 items on the consent agenda.
There's no questions, I'll move for approval.
Motion in a second. Ms. Wright, please, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris, Mr. LaLance, Mr. Martin, Mr. Shacklet, Mr. Smotherman, Mr. Wade, Mayor McFarland.
All right, we'll now move to old business. Let's give it just a quick second, Matthew.
Sure.
All right, we'll move into old business. We have Parks and Recreation... Matthew, I saw you standing up. I'm like, you're doing Parks and Recreation tonight? We have the Parks and Recreation Commission's Oversight of St. Clair Senior Citizen Center. This is second and final reading of ordinance 19018.
No questions, move for approval.
Second. Motion in a second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris, Mr. LaLance, Mr. Martin, Mr. Shacklet, Mr. Smotherman, Mr. Wade, Mayor McFarland.
All right, we're going to remove item 23 off of the agenda. We're going to move into land use matters. Item 24, plan of services and zoning for a property located along Cherry Lane, second and final reading, planning.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor McFarland and members of council. Our next item tonight is amended plan of services. This was an item that you considered on March 8th, 2018. We held second reading on the companion zoning request because there were some issues providing fire protection to the existing structure on the property. Since that time, the fire department has reevaluated the conditions on the property. And in addition, the property owner has made some modifications to the access. So, we have amended the section of the plan of services dealing with fire protection based upon the new information provided to us by the Fire and Rescue Department. And so, we have before you tonight a resolution with an amended plan of services. There were some housekeeping changes, such as changing the tax rate and things of that nature, that since this was considered back in 2018. But the only substantive change is that to the Fire and Rescue section of the plan of services. So, there's a resolution before you for the amended plan of services that would supersede the resolution approved in March of 2018 approving the plan of services for this item. And then after that, we have the companion zoning request that because the fire department's conditions have been addressed, is now ready to be considered for second and final reading. It was approved by council on March 8th, 2018 on first reading. The request, the zoning request is for RSA Type 2, residential, single-family, attached, suburban townhouse option for the property simultaneous with annexation. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. And Mr. Larry Gilliland, the property owner and potential developer of this property is here, if you have any questions for him.
Okay, we'll need to consider resolution 18RPS0701. This resolution supersedes the one that we did in 2018.
Move for approval.
Motion in a second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris, Mr. LaLance, Mr. Martin, Mr. Shacklet, Mr. Smotherman, Mr. Wade, Mayor McFarland.
All right, we'll now need to consider ordinance 18OZ07.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion in a second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris, Mr. LaLance, Mr. Martin, Mr. Shacklet, Mr. Smotherman, Mr. Wade, Mayor McFarland.
All right, we'll now need to consider ordinance 18OZ07.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion in a second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris, Mr. LaLance, Mr. Martin, Mr. Shacklet, Mr. Smotherman, Mr. Wade, Mayor McFarland.
All right, we'll move to item 25, amending the Spring Creek PRD zoning along Asbury Lane, second and final reading, planning ordinance 19OZ24.
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris, Mr. LaLance, Mr. Martin, Mr. Shacklet, Mr. Smotherman, Mr. Wade, Mayor McFarland.
All right, we'll now move to item 26, rezoning approximately 2.2 acres located along Manson Pike, second and final reading, planning. This is ordinance 19OZ25. Second. Motion in a second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris, Mr. LaLance, Mr. Martin, Mr. Shacklet, Mr. Smotherman, Mr. Wade, Mayor McFarland.
All right, we'll move to ordinance 19OZ27 for zoning for property located along Florence Road. This is second and final reading.
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris, Mr. LaLance, Mr. Martin, Mr. Shacklet, Mr. Smotherman, Mr. Wade, Mayor McFarland.
All right, we'll move to ordinance 19OZ27 for zoning for property located along Florence Road. This is second and final reading.
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris, Mr. LaLance, Mr. Martin, Mr. Shacklet, Mr. Smotherman, Mr. Wade, Mayor McFarland.
All right, ordinance 19OZ28 to rezone approximately 1.2 acres located along Bridge Avenue. This is second and final reading.
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris, Mr. LaLance, Mr. Martin, Mr. Shacklet, Mr. Smotherman, Mr. Wade, Mayor McFarland.
All right, ordinance 19OZ29, rezoning approximately 0.4 acres located along North Maple Street, second and final reading.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion in a second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris, Mr. LaLance, Mr. Martin, Mr. Shacklet, Mr. Smotherman, Mr. Wade, Mayor McFarland.
All right, ordinance 19OZ30, rezoning approximately 13.9 acres located along North Tennessee Boulevard.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion in a second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris, Mr. LaLance, Mr. Martin, Mr. Shacklet, Mr. Smotherman, Mr. Wade, Mayor McFarland.
All right. Ordinance 19OZ31, amending the Marymont Springs PUD at 1126 Rucker Lane.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion in a second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris, Mr. LaLance, Mr. Martin, Mr. Shacklet, Mr. Smotherman, Mr. Wade, Mayor McFarland.
All right, moving to land use matters. Mandatory referral for abandonment of a drainage utility easement east of Agri Park Drive. Ms. Blom.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. This was a matter that the Planning Commission considered at its August 21st regular meeting. And it's the property that is located along the east side of Agri Park Drive, actually borders John R. Ice Boulevard, too. There's an apartment complex currently being developed on that property. There is an easement that was recorded prior to the development of that property. And when the easement was recorded, the easement stated, to the extent that easement is not required by governmental directive, same shall be released by grantor or their successor in interest. And it's been determined that this easement is no longer needed. And so, Mr. Ives has referred this to us to take to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission considered it on August 21st and voted to recommend approval to the city council. If approved by the city council, the applicant will be responsible for providing the information necessary for the legal department to prepare the legal documents for the easement abandonment as well as for recording those documents. I'll be happy to answer any questions about this mandatory referral.
There's no questions, I'll move for approval.
Second. Motion in a second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris, Mr. LaLance, Mr. Martin, Mr. Shacklet, Mr. Smotherman, Mr. Wade, Mayor McFarland.
All right, we have a mandatory referral for abandonment of East Sevier Street right-of-way.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Our next mandatory referral is for a segment of East Sevier Street right-of-way that really is a small segment of right-of-way that goes to nowhere, actually goes to the old city cemetery. So, the likelihood of it being extended eastward to South Manny Avenue in the future is pretty slim. The Greenhouse Ministries, which owns the property to the south of this segment of right-of-way, has approached us and requested that we abandon this segment of right-of-way. They have some future development plans that you may be seeing for their property to the south in the future. And so, what they would like to do would be to incorporate some or all of this right-of-way into their tract for additional developable acreage. The property directly to the north is developed with two single-family residences, and there is an existing driveway off of this right-of-way, circular driveway that leads to the two existing single-family residences. Planning Commission considered this matter after conducting a public hearing at its September 4th meeting, and then voted to recommend the abandonment of this right-of-way to the city council. As far as the disposition of this right-of-way, typically what the city's protocol has been in past situations like this is we take the center line of the right-of-way, the southern half of the right-of-way would go to the property owner in the south, the northern half would go to the property owner to the north, unless one of the property owners could prove that the entire right-of-way originally came from their tract. Or if one of the property owners negotiated with the other to allow the other person to acquire the entire right-of-way. But with that being said, the Planning Commission did determine that this right-of-way did not, no longer served a public purpose, and is recommending its abandonment to the city council. I'll be happy to answer any questions. And even though the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing, the city council is not required to conduct a public hearing on this, we just consider it as a mandatory referral.
Any questions?
What is the difference between a stub street and a dead end?
Stub street, Mr. Smotherman, would typically, there would be the expectation that that stub street would be extended in the future. In this situation, it's, I don't know if you would call it a stub street or just a dead end, but it's a street that essentially stubs into the city cemetery property without any proper terminus in a cul-de-sac. And I would say with very little possibility of it being extended in the future.
We see so many cases where we have stub streets in the city, but they'll use drive access off of that drive. The concern that some would have off of this one is the fact that if you eliminate the street, then you take away that access point that they may use as a roadway onto their property. I get that they're acquiring more property, and I think the property should be split down the middle if it is approved. But I do, I know with the Planning Commission, there was some opposition to it, and I understood what their concerns were. So, have the property owners agreed yet? Do we know that?
No, sir. I think that is something that would be discussed if the city council determines to abandon the right-of-way. How we dispose of it would be something that we would work with the property owners in the future to determine how we would dispose of it. And Mr. Smotherman, just to recap for the rest of the city council, the two of the property owners of the property to the north did come and speak at the Planning Commission meeting and expressed some concern about the abandonment of this right-of-way.
Who owns the property?
It's the Barrett family, I believe, to the north. And Greenhouse Ministries owns to the south.
But the right-of-way, even though it's a right-of-way, that's not owned by the city, is it, whose property is it on?
No, sir, it's city property.
So, it's all city property?
Yes, yes, so it's...
It's currently a road. It's a stub street.
Mayor, excuse me, I would say that the city has a right-of-way on this, an easement of right-of-way. I don't think that we actually own it. Many of the properties, the streets we build today, we acquire property and fee simple. This has been there a long time, and I have not, frankly, I haven't looked real hard because I didn't think it was my job of the parties want to look at it. They can, but I did go back a ways, and I didn't see anything that indicated that the city paid for that. It just, at some point, became a street, and we would have a right-of-way, so we would just be abandoning our interest in it as a city street.
But if it's a right-of-way, even though, like an easement, even though there's an easement on someone's property, someone else owns the property. So, would it be up to, if we abandon our right-of-way, it would be up to the two property owners to figure out who owns it?
And again, our assumption, our starting point would be that we abandon it down the middle, unless one property owner can prove that it all came from his. I have been told that once upon a time, all this and a lot of other property around here was all owned by one family or one man, and it got carved up over time. And who had what when they built the street, we haven't found out yet, and again, I haven't really tried to, I haven't gone back that far. So, we would assume it's down the middle, unless somebody can show us something that tells us otherwise. Or unless they can agree to some other way. And that's not too... Or unless they can agree to some other, some other way. And that's not too unusual. One party agrees, it doesn't make sense for me to have this strip because of however the land lays, and it makes sense for the other party. So they do sometimes agree, and sometimes it's down the middle.
Stand corrected on the ownership. And that's, glad Mr. Ives is here.
Wasn't this property part of the city cemetery at one time? There's a gate at the end of it. I mean, was it an access point to the city cemetery?
I kind of remember a little bit. There were several properties over there that were, they used to call them tippeling houses. And then they were just taken down because of, they begin, it was a very blighted area, this particular stub street. And I'm not sure if that same property owner is existing there, but there used to be residences down this street. So, I don't know that the, does the question of our abandoning the right-of-way doesn't really settle the issue with the property owners as to who owns the property, though, does it? I mean, they would, that would still have to be negotiated, or...
We would require some indication. Of course, we could abandon it down the right-of-way. The norm on this is that when they give us descriptions, we execute, the city executes a quitclaim deed to the appropriate property owner. And on this, we would, starting point would be two quitclaim deeds, one to the owner of the south, one to the owner of the north. Again, unless one proves something, or if they agree to something different.
And Mayor and Council, Mr. Matt Taylor is here. He represents Greenhouse Ministries. He said his client is out of the country right now, but there have been some conversations, according to Mr. Taylor, between the two, the two parties, to the north and south.
How did it go in the Planning Commission meeting? What were some of the, the people who were against it? What were some of their comments? What did they, why did they feel that it should not be done?
I think that...
If you don't remember, that's okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I can remember, so I'll jump in if you want me to. But I think there was some concern related to Greenhouse. It had been a kind of a collecting point for some homeless activity, and I think there had been some homeless challenges related to that particular site. And so, I think it concerned the property owners. I think that was a big objection that the property owners brought forward.
Yeah. Well, I wasn't quite sure how to paraphrase that.
At one time, this was five separate lots. There were at 1.5 separate residences, and the five addresses still show up. It has been re-subdivided into one tract, and the three houses toward the rear of it, from Academy Street, are gone. That's all just grassy area back there, and there are now two houses, both of which front of South Academy, but the southerly house does have a drive-through driveway off of Sevier Street.
Yeah, there used to be, years ago, three houses on one side and three houses on the other, because that's where we used to go and play. I mean, and all the houses were red houses. They were all the same houses. So, Bill, you may remember that, too.
I remember some of that. I sure do. Should we, should we wait for the property owners, or is that, is that something we should do until they've negotiated what they're, who's maintaining that street now? Are we maintaining that street? Sure.
The city's maintaining it. And I think that what, what tonight's decision is, is that the Planning Commission is asking you to consider is whether or not it serves a purpose as a, as a public street, and whether or not it's appropriate to abandon it as a public street. And then, how we dispose of it, I think, is not necessarily at issue tonight, as far as, as far as what action the Planning Commission is recommending to you.
I guess I'm just going to go ahead and ask this. I mean, if we, there's probably other roads that kind of go to nowhere. Why are we abandoning this right-of-way and not those? I mean, why this spot?
Because we received a request for it. Because they, they're seeking to develop the property to the south, and they saw it as an opportunity to add, add to their developable parcel. So they're, they're requesting the right-of-way abandonment in advance of preparing plans, so that they know how much area they have to work with.
And city is certainly not required to abandon this right-of-way. It's a request, and it's our option. If there's some sense that it might be needed for future use, then we shouldn't abandon it, because it'll be real expensive to get back. And I know of some situations where a street wasn't even built, but it was, it's still a street. The two parties couldn't agree on how it should be divided on the abandonment, and so it's still a street. It still sits there, and...
And we're simply acting on a request. If the City Council chooses not to abandon the right-of-way, then, then they'll know that they just have to work within the bounds of their existing, their existing parcel.
Matthew, will you expand a little bit on, if we vote to abandon it tonight, what would the process look like for the two individuals who are interested specifically, so we'll know?
I think, I think they'll continue to work amongst themselves, and we'll be happy to be a party to that, obviously, because it's, it's, we're abandoning the city's interest. And so, how we dispose of that, as Mr. Ives mentioned, we would start from the center line as a baseline for, as a starting point. And then, if they were able to show that, that all of the right-of-way came from one of their parcels, I think that would probably give one or the other property owner standing to request the entirety. However, in the event that they weren't, they could still negotiate amongst themselves, say one could buy the other's interest in the, in the half that is adjacent to their property. So, but we would, you know, be happy to facilitate, to work with them in facilitating that discussion.
If they bought it, who would they pay?
I think they would, Mr. Ives, they would probably pay the other party, the, for their...
Since we haven't purchased, as far as we can tell, the city never bought that street. You know, it just took it over. And so, we normally abandon it without cost to anyone.
But if we were to reclaim it, wouldn't we pay for the easement?
Well, we sure would if we wanted it back. Right. If we abandoned it and then want it back, we'll get to pay for it.
So it has value to the city, technically?
Potentially. It has. And of course, to some extent, it's just a liability. It's a street that, no, we don't, it doesn't take a lot of maintenance.
Right.
There's, I don't, there's asphalt, I think, on it, but...
It's pretty chippy asphalt, you're right.
And we're not maintaining it as a street that people drive on every day. There's no curb and gutter at all on this section of the street. I guess personally, I would recommend that we defer and see if the parties can reach an agreement. It'll make it a lot more comfortable for everyone. And we still, at some date, if we want to force the issue, we can and abandon it, and...
Before we do that, I got, sorry.
Let me express my concern. Is both of these properties are commercial highway properties?
Or, yeah, yeah, they're, they're commercial products.
I think they are.
And what you're going to do is if you abandon that easement, then you eliminate either of those properties from having the right to use that as their access point and their road going on to their property. And because neither one of them, if you split it down the middle, will have a right-of-way, and therefore, you're creating a unaligned intersection that currently is an aligned intersection. And I have yet to be given a good reason to abandon the property. And whoever develops on it, whether it's Greenhouse Ministries or the Barretts to the north, no matter who does that, they should be required to bring that road up to standard and put curbs and road in there that would be up to city standard, I would think, if they were to develop on either side of that property.
I don't know what the requirements of them would be, but they'd most likely have to make some improvement to that, if they're going to use it as part of a development.
Right.
Because right now, it's so substandard almost, that it doesn't have curb and or guttering or anything on it, that would need to be there if they were going to use it as an access point, a commercial access point onto their property.
I'm looking at the Google map here, just for what it's worth. It looks like there's actually the property owner directly to the north. It looks like a house, but maybe it is commercial. But it, they're actually, they've got a circular drive that...
Yes, they do.
...goes out to two different places on this street we're talking about, right? So they're obviously using it.
Well, those houses are both empty and substantially boarded up. They do use, both of them, I think, as some storage, but they're not, they're not residences at this point. But they, in the past, certainly did use that circular drive. Even though the house technically fronts on Academy, they did have the circular drive off of Sevier Street.
This is maybe a silly question, but you'll see why. Is there any kind of a fee or whatever to request something like this?
No, it's actually one of the, one of the items that we put in our budget this year. There are a few other fees that we are planning on bringing before you, but as of right now, there's no fee for it.
If we, if we deny it, can they just bring it right? You know, look, I kind of feel like I obviously need to learn a little bit more about this. My lean is one direction. But instead of deferring it, I mean, we just go ahead and scrap this thing, and is it easy enough just to reapply for whoever requested it, to bring it back up? Or is there some waiting period or anything like that?
It's, it's not a zoning action, so there's no minimum, minimum waiting period if it's denied. So I think that...
There's hardly any reason to defer it, I guess, is what my point is. I mean, they could just bring it right back up in front of us. Is that...
Right. I think if they, if you denied it, and they had some additional information, like if they were to come to an agreement with the property owner to the north, they could certainly re-initiate a same request.
With no cost and without any kind of timeline, is my point, right?
With no cost for the time being.
Okay. It'll still be pretty minimal.
Yes.
Yeah.
Matthew, as a follow-up question, if we do abandon it tonight, the applicant will still have to apply to the city for the disposition of the property, correct?
That's correct. I believe that, that the disposition would not actually occur until such time as we knew how it was going to be divided. And at that point, I believe that that has not been resolved.
And would the council vote on that disposition once it happened, or would staff make that decision?
I will defer to Mr. Ives on that.
Normally, it has not been. It is, we've relied on the parties to agree, and council would just be agreeing that we should abandon that right-of-way, not necessarily how it, how it gets dispersed. Now, if there's a continued contest amongst the parties, then council would get to decide, I guess, again, you know, which may be one of the reasons why I would see a deferral as being appropriate, and give them the chance to come back with something reasonable time. And if it's at loggerheads, we can bring it back up, staff can bring it back up and ask to be deferred, denied.
And I'm thinking specifically about the property, and I can't even remember if I was on the council when this happened, but I was here. But that property on Manson Pike, where there was some dispute related to the abandonment and who had claim to those properties, because there were several parcels that bordered that piece, was that request as a result of, was that in conjunction with the abandonment, request for abandonment, or was that a separate action that couldn't be agreed upon?
We brought information to you as to how we envisioned it being disposed of. And I don't believe that the City Council ever took action on that. I believe that because the zoning has been kind of indefinitely deferred, we brought information to the Planning Commission, but I don't think the City Council ever took action on that. But we, through a lot of long and laborious hours by Mr. Huddleston and his staff, researched where it would, where staff recommended it, that it would be appropriate to divide the property. Thank you.
And I guess this is minimal, but I'm assuming that nobody's paying property tax on this property, even though it's an easement. I mean, because we keep saying...
Generally not.
Yeah. So, if we were to approve it, I guess we would get a minimal increase in property tax.
Dollars, I guess, yeah.
If the property lines were redrawn. But I don't think that's a factor in it. But I do think the, the value of the property will be affected by removing their ability to have easement onto that property from that roadway. So, I mean, that's, that was my concern before, and it's still my concern.
I'm going to make a motion we defer it.
Second. Motion second, Ms. Schreit. Please call the rule.
Vice Mayor's Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
No.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Mandatory referral for abandonment of a sanitary sewer easement east of Florence Road.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Our next mandatory referral, as you mentioned, is for a sanitary sewer easement on the east side of Florence Road. It's the area colored in green right here on the map for you. This was an easement that was acquired from Shane Hastings in order to provide sanitary sewer service to the Shelton Square subdivision. Shelton Square subdivision ended up following a different route for sanitary sewer, and this easement is no longer needed. The Water Resources Board did vote to recommend to the Planning Commission to abandon this easement, and the Planning Commission, in turn, is recommending its abandonment to you. Planning Commission voted on August 21st to make that recommendation to you. I'll be happy to answer any questions regarding this easement abandonment request.
Y'all sure you don't have some questions on this?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Like a good idea, man.
Motion second, Ms. Schreit.
Vice Mayor's Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to mandatory referral for abandonment of East Loki Avenue, North Academy Street, Jet and Drive, Christie Court, Palm Court, right-of-way. Hey, Rick, what's your address, so we can...
And I thought I'd let y'all know, I have about five more mandatory referrals on other business, so... Hope y'all aren't tired of them. Just kidding, just kidding. Our final mandatory referral request tonight is in conjunction with a rezoning request that you'll hear in just a little bit for the Oakland Court Development by the Murfreesboro Housing Authority. So with this one, what we decided to do was kind of study large, knowing that we could scale back. These are all of the streets that are encompassed within the Oakland Court Development, and all of these are public rights-of-way that are going to either be eliminated or reconfigured. So we don't know exactly how much of the right-of-way we'll need to abandon. But as I mentioned, we're studying large, and then we'll scale back as the design team finds out exactly what right-of-way, rights-of-way they'll need to abandon. It's a segment of North Academy Street, a segment of East Loki Avenue, a segment of Jettan Drive, and the entirety of Christie Court and Palm Court. Planning Commission considered the, this request at its September 4th meeting, and unanimously recommended the approval of this mandatory referral by a vote of six to nothing. As you can imagine, it was quite a complicated mandatory referral to study. So I've got a few recommended conditions of approval. If you'll bear with me, I'll read them as quickly as I can. Number one, North Academy Street shall remain public, and the quitclaim deed abandoning this segment of right-of-way shall not be recorded until a plat dedicating new right-of-way has been recorded. Number two, East Loki Avenue from North Academy Street westward shall remain public. The quitclaim deed abandoning this segment of right-of-way shall not be recorded until a plat dedicating new right-of-way has been recorded. Number three, a public-to-private transition delineation shall be provided at the eastern terminus of the East Loki Avenue right-of-way. Number four, all existing and proposed drainage ways shall be placed in drainage easements meeting city standards, and in addition, utility easements shall be retained as needed. Number five, the applicant shall be required to submit the necessary documents to the legal department required to draft the quitclaim deed. Number six, the applicant shall be responsible for recording the quitclaim deed. And number seven, the abandoned right-of-way shall be incorporated into the existing parcels via a subdivision plat recorded at the Register of Deeds office. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. As I mentioned earlier, the zoning request will be later on in tonight's agenda.
Any questions for Mr. Baumley?
If not, so moved.
Second. Motion second.
Vice Mayor's Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Can I ask a question? We'll be there second reading on these, or no second reading on these?
No, sir. It's just, it's just a mandatory referral action.
Upstake.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to rezoning approximately 14, or excuse me, Planning Commission recommendations to schedule public hearings. Mr. Baumley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. We have four public hearings to schedule. I believe all of these public hearings can be, can be heard in one night. We would recommend November 7th as a potential public hearing date. If that doesn't work, I have an alternate, an alternate.
Mr. Lance, is that in the form of a motion? November 7th.
November 7th, I'll be out down.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
Was that for Rick to be out of town or was that for the scheduled public?
Yes. I'm sure is the answer.
What's the other date?
What's your other date?
Uh, the other date, um, I'm gonna leapfrog over Halloween-
Okay.
And go back to October 24th. That will give us just enough time to meet state requirements for the annexation. That's, but, that's just a second option if you'd like. And, and I'm not even certain, uh, if Mr. Tinda was planning on having a meeting that night or not.
If we have public hearings, we'll do it.
It's all about Rick.
Just saying, I, yep. Y'all make the motion, I'm good with whatever.
Will you be here?
24th is what I'll be, yeah. But it's all right, whatever.
I make a motion, we make the 24th.
Second. Motion, second, Ms. Wright, please call the rule.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to rezoning approximately 14.55 acres located along west of New Salem Highway in Warrior Drive. Mr. Anthony.
Good evening, everyone, thank you. Uh, the applicant, Charles Mitchell Jr., has requested rezoning of 14.55 acres located west of New Salem Highway and northwest of Warrior Drive from light industrial to general industrial. The property is located within the West Point subdivision and it lies east of the west fork of the Stones River. Um, as you may remember, the general industrial district was recently created, uh, as a means of allowing light industrial uses in addition to certain heavy industrial uses. Many of the more intense heavy industrial uses are not permitted, um, in the general industrial district and within your packet, you should have a copy of chart one of the zoning ordinance and both the general and light industrial districts are highlighted on that chart. You can see the differences, um, in the uses permitted in those districts. Adjacent zoning includes LI or light industrial on all sides. Property on the west side of the river, I do want to point out, is zoned RS10, so that's across the, the west fork of the Stones River. Uh, the Murphysboro 2035 Land Use Plan shows urban, commercial and mixed use as the most appropriate land uses for this property. The planning commission conducted a public hearing for this item at its August 7th meeting and when discussing this item and subsequently making a favorable recommendation to you for it, uh, the planning commission determined that this would be an appropriate, uh, time to deviate from the land use plan. Uh, staff can answer any questions either before or after the public hearing.
Any questions? All right, we'll need to hold a public hearing for this rezoning request. Uh, anyone wishing to speak for or against, when you come to the podium, if you'll state your name, your address, uh, you'll have three minutes if you're representing an individual, five minutes if you're representing a, a neighborhood or a group. Uh, if you'll keep all comments to, uh, directed to the city council, we'll get all of those answered at the end of the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, CNN will close the public hearing, will consider ordinance 19OZ34 on first reading.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, second. Ms. Wright, please call the rule.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll now move to rezoning approximately 20 acres located along North Academy Street, East Loki Avenue, East Henry Street, Christie Court, Palm Court, Jet and Drive.
Thank you. Uh, Murphysboro Housing Authority has requested rezoning of 20 acres located primarily along North Academy, uh, Street and East Loki Avenue, um, among several other streets from duplex residential or RD to planned residential district or PRD. Adjacent zoning includes a mix of RD, RM16, P, CM and CMR. Adjacent land uses include a mix of residential types along with the Oakland's Mansion and Park. The planning commission conducted a public hearing for this request on August 7th and voted to send it forward to you with a favorable recommendation. I do want to point out that that recommendation includes allowing a reduction in the number of parking spaces from 608, which would be required under the zoning ordinance, to 350, uh, which the applicant believes would be, uh, plenty sufficient for this project. To avoid being repetitive, I'm gonna turn this over to Margaret Butler with MHM. She's gonna give you a brief presentation on the project and staff can answer any questions you may have before or after, uh, the public hearing.
Hello, my name is, um, Margaret Butler. I'm with the architectural firm McCarty-Holspellem-McCarty and we're the architects, uh, here representing the project tonight. We also have Kevin Gunther of Reagan Smith, um, uh, Mr. Thomas Rowe, who's the executive director of the housing authority, as well as Charlie Teasley, chair of the board. I know many of you are familiar with the project, so we'll go through it briefly. If you have any questions, feel free to, uh, let me know. Um, the, uh, Oakland Court, uh, project is really all about a new neighborhood connection, uh, with the existing neighborhood and how this property can be used to connect that with the beautiful city park there at the Oakland's Mansion. Photographs of the property in its current state, uh, as you may know, was built by the housing authority in the late 50s. Residents moved in in 1960. Uh, Mr. Anthony just reviewed the existing zoning. Here, we indicate, uh, that there has been a very extensive public engagement process in the planning of the project. We held over 18 engagement, separate engagement, uh, meetings with residents, uh, stakeholders and the city and have recorded over 700 public comments on the property. The scope of the, uh, project includes, um, not only redevelopment of the property for the 76 Oakland Court residents that are, uh, are homes that are there now, but also the move of the Mercury Court, um, um, development by the housing authority to this property. So ultimately, as shown in these phasing diagrams, it'll be a two-phased project and the first phase will accommodate the 67 residences for the, um, current Oakland Court residents and then the second phase, shown in orange here, will include the, um, movement of all the residents that are currently at Mercury Court to this property. This is the master plan that was developed out of the planning process. Um, you will note that, um, let's see if I have a cursor here. We have along, uh, as you just heard, for the abandonment of the property, we have North Academy Street going along here, which we envision remaining, um, straight as is currently cutting through the property. Uh, we envision a terminus of, uh, Loki, um, coming into a, um, kind of focal point or heart of the property. Expansion of the, uh, park, uh, as part of this, uh, project will, to serve both the residents of the neighborhood as well as, uh, there have been extensive engagements with the Oakland's Mansion Board to kind of restore that part of the, um, property and really connect the park from the neighborhood back to the park with the Oakland's Mansion property. Uh, as you can see, it is, uh, based on the idea that the residents, the homes will all be placed toward the, um, uh, facing the street with sidewalks, si- street trees. Um, all the homes will either be single-family, duplex or tri- and just a few triplex residences. Really the idea of connecting this neighborhood back in the same, uh, planning method that the adjacent neighborhood was historically built upon. So, that's the, the general idea of the property. We've engaged in, uh, recorded comments about how to make the, uh, community a healthy community. We are tying in, um, 1,250 linear feet of, uh, walkways that will connect to the, to the walkways that are currently in the park. In one item that I'll touch on a little bit more in detail with is regarding the parking as Mr. Anthony mentioned, we are requesting, um, reduction in the typical zoning, uh, which would require 608 spaces. Uh, what we did was we, um, the housing authority was able to give us numbers on the numbers of cars currently in the 150 homes that are both in Oakland and Mercury and they currently have 137 cars. Um, so with the disparity between the existing 137 cars that the residents own now and the requirement of 608, we feel like we've made a, uh, plausible, um, estimate to, uh, what that, that 137 is point nine cars per residence. And so what we're requesting is that we double that. We'd be providing 1.8 car, um, parking spaces per resident and an additional 30%, additional 80% for any guests or visitors they'd have. So, um, uh, requesting a reasonable, what we believe is a reasonable amount in 350 cars. What this indicates is that the way that the cars are arranged, each home and their parking court would have parking nearby and they would have two spaces really, um, easily nearby their home. So, that's the, um, main, uh, request there, which you see here is a section through the street and right-of-way where we would have, uh, a six-foot landscaping, uh, strip on each side of all the streets, um, which would have street trees planted, um, um, we'd have a five-foot sidewalk around all the streets, um, and then a 10-foot, uh, front yard setback which your, where your utilities would go. And then beyond that, we have a facade zone, 10 to 15 foot facade zone, which allows the homes to be placed, um, as they would have historically been placed along streets such as this. And I will point out, in all the homes, they have a front or side porch which would be looking at the street. We've worked with the landscape architects at Reagan Smith, um, and the planning department to identify street tree, understory, foundation plannings that would be commiserate with, uh, the other directions, uh, as pursued by the city and, um, all very accommodating to this climate and neighborhood. This is a plan indicating that. I know that's small, you know, can't probably see a lot of detail. One thing I would point out in the architectural and architectural design of the homes, we did an extensive study of the homes here in the Murphysboro community and identified the styles and are designing the homes so that they will, um, architecturally blend in with the beautiful styles that are currently here in the community. Just an example of what that would be in the, um, Craftsman, Prairie, Colonial and Victorian styles. This is, um, showing how the, uh, homes would be arranged. The homes will be, um, a mixture of one, two, three, four and five-bedroom, uh, homes as that are, uh, in the neighborhoods currently. Quick review of the materials, um, um, the, um, uh, working with the THDA, they have requirements on the materials for a project such as this. Forty percent of the homes will be of brick or, um, brick masonry or real stucco. We'll be using hardy siding, um, 30-year shingle roofing, um, concrete sidewalks. Another nice, uh, element of the project will be, um, using pervy, uh, a good deal of permeable pavement, pavement, excuse me, pavement in the, uh, parking courts, um, that will help with the stormwater and other issues. And then lastly, uh, working closely with, uh, um, the, um, Department of Waste Management and how that they would like to, um, um, accommodate the trash pickup and what we are showing is that each home will have a small screened, uh, area for their trash cans and they will be brought to the front of their home, uh, along the street to be picked up along the street like everybody else's house. So there won't be these large central, uh, race, waste receptacles. It will be just a very common, um, pickup as, as the rest of the neighborhood is handled. That's a very quick overview and I'm happy to accommodate any questions. And lastly, just a quick, uh, before and after, this is, uh, looking down, seeing the Oakland's Mansion and after, how that park is restored and the park continues on into the neighborhood. Uh, looking along North Academy here and Loki Avenue and seeing how the, um, extension of the park and a more gracious entrance from this direction to the Oakland's, um, Mansion and Park would really extend back into the neighborhood. And then lastly, looking northward along North Academy and what that will be like when the new homes are in place, so. Happy to entertain any questions.
General question, probably from one of our staff members, um, I guess somebody who might have looked through this and, and this, this actually is, uh, just a total brainstorm thing here, but I just wanna make sure I at least get it out before we get. I, I don't think it'll matter, I mean, we could always go back, but, uh, it has to do with a little bit with what we just did on, um, Maple Street. You know, I was asking the question about the setback on that Point 4 acres, maybe a wider road. When, when this was put together, was there ever any discussion about running Loki all the way down in front of the mansion and all the way over to Highland so that we could, that basically, uh, allows traffic to get through there? Is that just impossible? It looks like y'all have talked about it before.
There was discussion, yes.
Afternoon, mayors, members of the council. Uh, Mr. LaLance, uh, actually I'll back you up to the, uh, Highland study. Uh, that was one of the ideas that we looked at in the Highlands, uh, redevelopment study. On paper, makes a lot of sense to, to, uh, attach those, um, several environmental considerations there with crossing the creek and the wetlands that we have since purchased, um, there along Sinking Creek and then, uh, the park properties we have there and so, um, we, we investigate eventually concluded that it, uh, probably be pretty difficult for us to do that physically with permitting and, and, uh, crossing the creek and so, uh, we, we did not pursue that, that option anymore.
If you go, yeah, I think, I think that, that, actually, a- as I was looking through this and talking about it, um, is, you're running sou- uh, what would be s- south of the mansion, you know, so in, here, here is, my question was looking at their deal, it basically changes the whole road structure, you know, so, I mean, you don't have to go off, you know, Loki right now comes up and kind of veers off to the north, which would take you behind the mansion and across the big part of the creek.
Correct.
And through the, save the wetlands. This, if we, if we change it and we veer Loki down to the south and come down in front of the mansion, does that, doesn't that avoid the majority of the wetlands?
Avoids the wetlands, goes through Oakland Parks and, uh, Tennessee Trail of Trees and, uh, the, uh, Manny Springs, um, and there's also a development, uh, uh, there's a, um, medical office on Highland, uh-
It comes out way south of that.
Yes, and so you're gonna, you're gonna hit all of those, uh, things we spent a lot of, um, federal and, and city monies on, uh, the Oakland Parks and-
All right.
Oakland Park enhancement.
But you would have park on both side of the roadway.
That's correct.
I mean, and-
That's correct.
And it, uh, it would direct a gr- a tremendous amount more traffic right across the front yard of the Oakland Mansion from a, from a tourism standpoint. To drive Medical Center Parkway straight across all the way to Highland, uh, that way it's wonderful and the other direction of getting the police department out Medical Center Parkway from Highland, it would be a straight shot if we could give them a, a direct route right through this area and straight up Loki up to Medical Center Parkway.
And so one of the, one of the challenges with, with the sort of the, the north part of downtown is the east-west connectivity. And, uh, so again, in the Highland study, we looked at our east-west connectivity and seeing how you, you link those major connections, Memorial Boulevard, uh, to the west and then, uh, Highland to the east. Uh, the, the network's not real clean through there, but there, there is a way. With our Manny Avenue project, we have included enhancements to Robert Street, which is a little bit south of where you're talking about. It doesn't give you a direct connection up to Loki then, but there, there are a couple of, um, a couple of streets changes that are not changes, but street, uh, or, uh, travel moves you could make there to get back to, uh, to west, to East Loki and then to West Loki. And Sinking Creek is part of our challenge there and then also-
Well, Sinking Creek's out of the picture if you go to, across the front of the property though, because the-
Yeah, that's right, because the bridge, the bridge is-
Spring is behind the house.
Correct.
So, it, uh, so you take the water completely out of place, so there's no bridge required and it, uh, and, and I hate blowing up this project, cause I love this project, but, but, but it's better to get it right before we start digging than it is to start digging and wish we'd have done it later on.
Yeah, so I, I think I hear maybe a suggestion, you'd like for us to look at that, uh, either with this plan or separate from this plan?
Personally, I personally would. I, I would like to ask, is there any kind of, uh, time scenario for this week?
Yeah, because we're on a time scale, we, we just all allocated 13 million in tax credit yesterday, so we submitted all this already to the state and-
Thomas, you wanna come up?
Yeah.
If you don't mind, come up, just to be helpful, get that on the record.
Yeah.
Uh, Thomas Rowe, the director of the housing authority. We have, uh, just been allocated our 13 million, which is 1.3 million for 10 years for our tax credits and- And we're all on time schedules moving forward. We hope to be able to close with the state and HUD by the end of the year.
Mr. Rowe, is there any reason that if we, as we're going through this process, that we see that this could be something that could be accomplished, that we couldn't come back, that y'all would be agreeable to come back and look at an amendment if we, you know, I, I think no one will, will disagree that trying to get that connectivity would be a good thing, not only for this development, but for the overall area. Is there a way that, Sam, if we, y'all may look at it tomorrow and say there's no possible way that it will work, but is there a way that we could approve this, but still keep studying that ability to occur that? Yeah, still have to go through second reading? Yeah, okay.
And theoretically, this would be a huge benefit to people coming up Medical Center Parkway who are going to MTSU, because there would be no need to go up and get on Clark Boulevard.
Memorial.
So it relieves a ton of pressure off Memorial, it relieves pressure off of Clark Boulevard, you know?
And don't disagree with any of those statements. I think we also need to look at the consequences of relocating that traffic, because it does force a good bit of additional traffic volume through an area of town that, you know, our road classifications through there, right now, Loki at that area is really a local street. It converts it to being a, not, probably not a minor arterial, but certainly a collector level street. So those traffic numbers go up from a, from a few hundred per day that they are now to, to a few thousand. And so that'll have consequences on our transportation system, also have consequences on the character of the neighborhood. And, and so the linkage of the transportation facilities, we thought it made a lot of sense. One of the things that, that our consultants cautioned us about is making that linkage will change the character of that neighborhood as well. And so just, I would just caution that, that we want to understand those consequences as well. And.
I mean, this project's gonna be one of the prettiest sections in town there as far as the development and the way it's designed and everything. I mean, it's, it's not an area that you would want to avoid once this is completed. I mean, this is gonna be a, a beautiful area. It takes them past Oakland Park, it generates more traffic for Oakland's, you know, and I get that there may be a couple of trees that wind up in the roadway, but, I mean, if you built a three-lane road from Medical Center all the way across there, and Rick had brought it up earlier and I had concerns that maybe there wasn't room for a three-lane road, but I've driven through there a couple times just last week and looked at it and there really does appear to be room for the roadway. Now, is it gonna impact, in fact, the properties next to it? No doubt. I mean, but, but it's a beautiful section of town and it would give you another thorough area that would go through the downtown area that would help get traffic in and out of the downtown area. So it, it sure looks like a really, really good opportunity that we need to look at before we close it off here and say, this is completely done, as much as I love this project and I want to see it come to fruition as soon as possible.
So we'll, we'll, we'll work to have you some additional information by second reading.
Well, let's, let's, let's go through the public hearing.
That's correct.
And I, I want to also hear, you know, what other council members want to, want to think before we direct you to go, to go just one direction without hearing from, from everyone else. So let's, let's open the public hearing. Anyone wishing.
Just one more regarding that. I just feel obligated to, to relay. So in some of our public meetings, we did have some residents express concern about traffic and the traffic that these hundred and fifty homes would generate versus the seventy-six that are currently there. And so Mr. Bill Huddleston of Huddleston Steel did a traffic study and for the hundred and fifty homes and found that wouldn't be a, to, to answer those community concerns. So just, just thought I should mention that, because that study was completed, so.
Thank you very much.
It gives them a better entrance in and out.
All right, anyone wishing to speak for or against on this plan development request, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none. We'll close the public hearing and will now consider on first reading, ordinance nineteen OZ thirty-three. Sam, the only thing I, I know, we've been working on a road connection in between Chick-fil-A and Burger King for, or Arby's on Memorial, going back to McKnight Park. We've been working on that for.
Six years.
Six years now. And that has to do with land that was bought with federal funds that's, that was park money and we're trying to, I mean, so it, it could be, if there's any of this property where that road would be, that would be on fund, land that we bought for parks, then it would have to go through that process, wouldn't it?
That's, that's correct. And then if you remember, the Corps of Engineers, through a federal grant, we did the improvements between the, at the Oakland's Pavilion and then also between the Oakland's Pavilion and Highland to enhance the Manny Springs, the Tennessee Trail of Trees, I think we, we called it. And, and those did include federal dollars. And so one of the, one of the things that we would have to analyze would be the administrative obstacles to, to reusing those lands for, for a roadway. I, I think, you know, the, as, as you look at the map and, and obviously when we did the Highland study, the Housing Authority had not brought this plan to us. I think there's probably some, some, some merit in, in maybe examining, maybe not that direct connection, but, you know, Robert Street does connect to Highland, we haven't proposed improvements there. It's only a stone's throw from Palm Court, which we're abandoning. I, I would still like maybe the alter, option to, to study some alternatives and, and bring something back here by, by second reading.
One, just general comment too. I'm not as familiar with the Highland study, because I haven't studied that in comparison to how this might change or work in concert with that. But I do think, you know, the applicant has done a tremendous job from a standpoint of communicating their plans and their intentions, both in the public meetings that they had and both through planning commission. I personally think it'd be a little unfair to turn left at this stage. I do appreciate the discussion of, let's do it now rather than it get past us, but from my standpoint, we should have already had that conversation. Just my comments.
I don't mind supporting it on first reading. I'd probably still like, you know, to, to have some more, you know, information about this or, and if, if, if there's four or five people that want to support without it, then it doesn't matter, you don't need to get it to me and I'll just move on, but I'd probably like to have it before I support it, but either way, it's okay with me on first reading.
I think this is a great product that they put in front of us. I think the Housing Authority's doing a great job trying to do something, bring a different message to our community. With that being said, I make the motion to approve.
Second. Motion second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Abstain.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Abstain.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Mr. Teasley and Mr. Rowe, I, I want to commend y'all. Mr. Teasley has been on the Murphysboro Housing Authority for quite, how long, Charlie, have you been on there?
Three or four.
That's right. But I want to commend y'all, you know, Thomas, when you came here, I think from North Carolina, this is North Carolina, right? That was one of the things that you talked about, is creating housing that didn't define individuals, but was more of a community. And that's what you've done. And I, I know as a council, we're gonna be proud when this comes in and we're gonna be proud to see what it does into that area and really what it'll do to revitalize the, the entire neighborhood. So keep up the good work. Please relay back to the commission members how much we appreciate y'all's service.
Thank you.
All right, on motion, T-Dot proposal, construct New Salem Highway and Thompson Lane Road improvements.
This is a resolution.
Mr. Kerr.
Good evening, Mayor, Member of the Council. This is a resolution of cooperation by the city with T-Dot for these two roadway improvements. T-Dot is proposed to improve State Route ninety-nine, New Salem Highway from a point west of Veterans Parkway, Casey Lane, along with State Route two sixty-eight, which is Thompson Lane, of course, from Broad Street to Memorial Boulevard. Both of these projects will consist of widening existing roadway systems from two lanes to five lanes with curb gutters, sidewalks, and other pedestrian features. Both projects are currently in the right-of-way phase of the process and neither are in T-Dot's current three-year plan for construction. On another note, Highway ninety-nine from I twenty-four to O'Fort Parkway is in T-Dot's current three-year plan for construction and it's currently scheduled for fiscal year twenty, twenty-one with the earliest possible letting date of December twenty, twenty. The city has provided eight point five million dollars for the Thompson Lane project. This includes six point eight million of our federal service transportation funds as well as one point seven million dollars of previous CIP funding. The city also provided ninety thousand dollars of previous TML bonds to get the Highway ninety-nine project moving forward. I'll answer any questions you may have.
We have a motion for resolution nineteen R twenty-one.
So moved.
Second. Motion second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Now, we have a T-Dot signal maintenance contract for I twenty-four for the Smart Corridor Project Phase Two.
Thank you, sir. This is a, a signal maintenance contract for Phase Two of the corridor project. I can give you a little bit of background information. December fourteenth, twenty seventeen, council passed Resolution seventeen R dash thirty, the project charter and resolution of support for the I twenty-four Smart Corridor Project. On December twentieth, twenty eighteen, council approved a signal maintenance agreement with T-Dot for Phase One of the I twenty-four Smart Corridor Project. The project includes approximately twenty-eight miles along I twenty-four from Interstate four forty to Church Street, approximately twenty-eight point five miles along State Route, State Route One, which we call Broad Street, from I twenty-four to Church Street. Approximately thirty miles of connected routes between I twenty-four and State Route One. Additionally, there are thirty-five traffic signals along Broad, Medical Center, New Salem Highway, O'Fort Parkway, and Church Street that the city maintains. The city currently maintains these signals and we do not, therefore, we don't anticipate additional costs associated with that. I'm available for any questions you may have.
No questions, move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have the West Wind Reserve Sewer Participation Requests. Ms. Gore.
Mayor City Council, thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight with these items. This first request is the, requesting that the Water Resource Enterprise, Enterprise Fund participate in funding a sewer extension through a development by upsizing the diameter of the main and increasing its depth per our approved policies and procedures. As you can see on the graphic here, that it's twenty-one hundred linear feet. It's the area that's clouded there on the left side of the exhibit. It's twenty-one hundred feet that, the way the policy works is that this particular development could serve itself through an eight-inch line that was less than twelve feet deep. For the overall master plan to be adhered to, we need an eighteen-inch line that's between sixteen and eighteen feet. So what we do is we have the engineer look at what the cost would be for an eight-inch line at the minimum depth to serve it versus the larger line at the deeper depth to serve the basin. What we have come up with is a price of a hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars and five cents. This is in line with our approved policies and procedures and we would ask for your approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We now have the Jordan Farm Soccer Field Use Reimbursement.
Yes, sir. This is the, the Jordan Farm, Jordan Farm that the Water Resources Department purchased back in two thousand and three. It was right at two hundred acres at thirty thousand dollars an acre. As you recall, a few years ago, twenty, twenty-six point two acres has been repurposed in the form of soccer fields. And so this is in essence asking the General Fund to reimburse the Water Resources Fund due to the different use. What we have looked at, again, at thirty thousand dollars per acre in two thousand and three, looking at a thirty-five thousand dollar reimbursement in twenty nineteen for twenty-six point two acres, that totals nine hundred and seventeen thousand. So I'm available for questions, if you have any.
I'll move for approval.
Motion second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We now have an extension for chemical purchases.
Yes, we bring these before you just because of the large dollar amount, but this is in a, a chemical contract that we executed in twenty fifteen. The vendor is maintaining its price of a dollar seventy-five per pound. We do have a total budgeted amount in the Water Resource Department for two hundred and eighty-five thousand. This is used in our dewatering process for biosolids at the Water Resource Recovery Facility. So we would ask for this, for your approval to extend the contract for an additional year.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We have a task order for a Hobus pipe inspection.
Yes, this is, really pertains to the emergency repair and the collapse that we've recently encountered there on South Malloy Lane near Bridge Avenue. With this, with that being the second collapse in a little under a year, we've asked S and ME to put together an engineering task order to do a video, a TELIDAR, CCTV, and a sonar combination to look at twenty-four thousand feet. We have thirty thousand feet, just over thirty thousand feet of this fiber-reinforced plastic pipe, which is thirty-six inch or greater, up to fifty-four inch. Twenty-four thousand feet of that is greater than fifteen feet in depth. So what we're asking S and ME to do is to develop specs and bids, which they've actually done that, and I'm about to, I will be presenting that as a other business item. Then, of course, provide inspection management evaluation and GIS integration if and when you approve the CCTV videotaping of this line. It's basically a proactive move to see if we've got any deflection, if we can identify if there's any other potential future collapses. We want to get ahead of this and potentially put forward some remedial actions to avoid any future sewer collapses. So the, the total, the total engineering task order is fifty thousand, five hundred. The bulk of that would be after the inspection is done.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you. If you don't have anything on the agenda, please have a seat.
I have, I have one other business item.
I'm just kidding. Yeah, what, what have you got?
Is it, am I doing the other business at this point or do we do something before that?
Well, I mean, we're going into licensing, but we'll, hey, we'll go to other business. Come on. What you got?
Keep going. I mean, just, it just, it's.
Yeah, while you're here.
While I'm up here, okay. Thank you, I appreciate it, sorry. This is the actual development of the specs and bid. We did get the engineer to move forward for the development of the, of the bids and, or the specs and bid to do this, see, uh, inspection of this line due to the fact that it, there is some time sensitivity to it, the fact that it's dry, the fact that we don't have a lot of infiltration and rainwater and groundwater intrusion in the pipe. It's best done when it's dry, so we're trying to get this done as quickly as possible. This is just kind of a graphic of, of what I mentioned earlier. A LIDAR, which is a light detection and ranging, it measures the, the roundness of the pipe. You can do the sonar, which sees under the water if you've got any debris, and then the CCTV that shows any cracks or defects. It's just actually a, a video of the line. So in essence, we're just trying to see if there's any egging of the pipe and that's what this inspection is gonna tell us, that potentially predict if there was a future failure. We did take bids, we had two bids. Low bid, a hundred and eighty-five thousand, four hundred and one dollars and sixty-six cents is what we would recommend award to Vortex Services.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Gore, do you have anything else?
Thank you, no, sir, appreciate it.
Chief Tunes, you want to come up and, while we're in other business?
While we're talking about drying, we've got a fire department person coming up, we might want to go ahead and talk about the burn ban y'all put in place this week.
It has been really dry here lately, tremendously dry. Mayor, Council, city staff, I'm here tonight asking the council approval for the extension of the fire suppression contract with York Veteran Administration Facility. York Veteran Administration Facility is located outside of city limits, for 19 years, the fire and rescue department has provided fire service to VA facility, contractual agreement. VA has requested to extend the contract for fire suppression and other service for additional one year. Extension's, extension's for one year, expiring on September 30th, 2020, the fee for the extension is $1,899,966 annually. It's also in the F-20 annual budget, including the VA fee in anticipation of the agreement. Any questions, I'll be glad to help answer.
So moved. Second.
Motion second, Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Deputy Chief Tunes, we do have a burn ban in place, right?
We start that Monday, yes, sir.
So, it is illegal to burn anything inside the city of Murfreesboro right now.
Right now, yes, until we get some significant rain, it'll be a little while we get that too.
All right.
Thank you.
We'll move into licensing, you've got several beer permits.
We do, Mayor, we've got a couple of convenience stores with gas at two locations, one at 1596 New Salem Highway, and another at 2121 Medical Center Parkway, those are both new locations, neither have finished up their building codes inspections, so we would wait to issue that permit if you approve it tonight, once those inspections have been completed. Additionally, we have a brewery that's asking for a manufacturing permit, it's an ownership change at 714 West Main Street, Suite F. We have a restaurant wanting to open up in a location at 2089 Last Cassis Pike, they have come before you before, but we have not issued the permit yet, and they are requesting a name change, that's the only thing that's changing on this one. And then, we also have a special event permit for fundraising effort by Read to Succeed, the Celebrity Spelling Bee, which will be held at the Grove.
I only had one question on beer permits, which was an unpaid parking citation by one of them, it can, it'd be my preference.
We can investigate that and find out why that wasn't paid, and try to get that taken care of before we issue the permit, once they've met their codes inspections.
With a, with a bulk motion, can we take that into account, that we make sure that that's covered before we, before it's approved to them?
We can.
With our motion, okay.
We'll just withhold issuance until that's been taken care of.
So moved. Second.
Motion second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
We have a special event permit for fundraising effort by Read to Succeed, the Celebrity Spelling Bee, which will be held at the Grove.
I only had one question on beer permits, which was an unpaid parking citation by one of them, it can, it'd be my preference.
We can investigate that and find out why that wasn't paid, and try to get that taken care of before we issue the permit, once they've met their codes inspections.
With a, with a bulk motion, can we take that into account, that we make sure that that's covered before we, before it's approved to them?
We can.
With our motion, okay.
We'll just withhold issuance until that's been taken care of.
So moved. Second. Second.
Motion second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Any, no board and commission statement or appointments, any statements to be paid?
No, sir.
Any other business? Mr. Gore, do you have any other business?
I have.
All right, just want to check. All right, council members, anything? All right, we'll stand adjourned. Have a great weekend.